Pledge Slute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've lost weight. You look good.
Thank you, sir.
Doesn't he?
He's been in there.
Pray with me, please. Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow on us each and every day. Our new school year begins in just a few days. Would ask that you please be with our students, parents, teachers, and staff as they all get ready to educate, teach, learn, manage, cook, clean, and transport our students to the prospective sites, help them be successful throughout the year. We would also say thank you for our teachers who have returned to us and those who are new to us, and thanks for our state leaders who helped our profession to realize a huge dose of respect that they've not seen for awhile. We thank you for our men and women of the armed forces, past, present, and future. They deserve our support and respect. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call.
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Troop.
Mrs. Zemrcheed.
Here.
And we don't have anybody signed up for a public comment. We're going to go on to superintendent's report, number three.
All right. I want to share some updates on our personnel and some facility updates as well. Just to let you know where we are with our personnel, we did hire 54 new hires for positions which needed to be filled. We hired one dean of students and one A.D. And the dean of students and A.D. came from within, so we actually filled 56 positions with 54 of those being new hires. Of those 54 new hires, at this point, 27 are residents. That means this is their first year in the profession, anywhere, PCPS or in the profession. Of those 27 residents, 17 are emergency certified, have emergency certifications. And we talked a little bit about the teacher shortage crises and where we are with our emergency certifications in Oklahoma. Of those 17 emergency certifications, six were educationally trained, but they just need to complete proficiency testing. And there are three proficiency tests required by all of our certified employees. And then 11 of those 17 emergency certified teachers are not traditionally trained in education. So we're kind of starting something new. We are beginning an induction phase with our resident teachers. We'll work with them for three years, provide them extra supports. All of our hires were great hires. They know a lot about the content. Where they're going to be a little bit behind is with classroom management and instructional strategies. Thankfully, we have instructional coaches at each one of our elementary schools, and we have a great deal of support in our district. So I'm proud that we got all of our new hires. I was afraid we wouldn't get all of our positions hired, and we did not. There's still one still open, and here it is. Our position to fill is an athletic trainer. Even though school is starting, we'll continually actively recruit and try to retain an athletic trainer. If you'll remember, when we had our last athletic trainer, we hired her out of a school in Texas in either September or October. So it's not out of the question that we will get an athletic trainer. You know, I think I told you last month that we still needed a special ed teacher, and I said, "I doubt we get one," but I was wrong. Mr. Layton, new teacher started on the 8th. And when did we hire our special ed teacher?
Seventh.
On the 7th. So there you go. The day before. We did absorb some positions, and part of this was due to enrollment. We absorbed a kindergarten at Lincoln. They had four sections. Now they're at three. We absorbed a second grade at Lincoln, and we actually did that at midterm last year when we lost a teacher at midterm. We reduced a first grade section at Roosevelt, a first grade section at Union, and a West Special Education math teacher based on our numbers of students required to be served in that position. I talked to you about this last time. We did fill a position, and it was initial consideration to absorb this position, and it was one of our pre-K teaching positions at Washington Pre-K. Watched numbers from enrollment, and thankfully, I'm glad we needed to hire a teacher because that meant our enrollment was up. I was a little concerned at this point last year, so we did in fact need that teacher. We don't want to turn away pre-K students, if any, that may come in. And before she was hired, our classes were full. We had 11 sections, and they were all full. We would have had to start turning away pre-Kers, and we don't want to do that. So that was our last pre-K, our last teacher. I think we hired her on the 8th. She started on the 9th, and new teachers started on the 8th, so she was a day late. I do want to give you an update of our facilities, some of our summer projects. Basically, the Solemn Stadium Press Box and Ticket Booth project is complete with the exception of that first picture. I think we told the property committee that we've had some artwork done about maybe putting up a metal sign, Solemn Stadium, Home of the Wildcats, on the front of that. In the middle, on the back of our press box, if you'll notice, the Ponca City was kind of down under the eve, and it was shaded. It's off right now, and Rick Scott's working to repair issues behind the sign and to lower that sign. And this is the view from the press box, and I believe two of our board members are in that picture, David and Judy. I had to throw in this picture because you kind of forget how things look. This is the before picture, before we had the press box. Now, this picture is a little bit unsightly because it was graduation May 2017, and some of our parents had saved their spots with tarps, but you can take a look at the press box, and just looking at it, I forget the difference. It's hard to believe the difference. Then here's the ticket booth. This is basically a completed project. We're still going to have some wording here, Solemn Stadium, or is it going to say just Home? Solemn Stadium, not Home of Solemn Stadium. So that still needs to be done. And I also wanted to do a before picture there. Remarkable, isn't it? Here's our concert hall project. I will tell you that that has been delayed to October 31st, November 1st timeframe. It's a very complex project. The inside is three stories high, and the workers have just a small perimeter to work in, so it is crowded out there. Not a lot of workspace, but you can see the concert hall project in various stages. And I've actually got two pictures of that. And the bottom right picture is from the third floor, looking toward the north at Pohai. Gorgeous view. So we're looking at probably a November 1 timeline. Here are pictures of our Robson interior improvements. You know, that we redid the floor again this summer, and it looks super sharp if you were out there today. New seating, new chair back, wider chair back, new scoreboard that drops from the ceiling, some new coverings over the little tiles that we had of our stick figure Wildcat football players, cheerleaders, steppers, and so forth. So the Robson interior improvements look great, and it is basically finished after the final resurface this summer. There is a before picture, so not a lot of difference there, but you can tell it's certainly been upgraded. Our new football locker room is complete, and I've got a rendering and the ground breaking and then in progress. And the picture on the right was taken during the Fall Bash, Friday night. So it looks nice and neat and clean. This is the old football locker room and the West ticket booth. The first picture shows the project under construction, and then I took that picture Sunday just through the fencing, and you can see the ramp and the progress on the ticket booth. And we have a September 1 completion date, but we think it's going to be before that, and we feel confident we'll be ready to go on our first home football game, August 31st with Enid. This is our weight training facility in different stages. Students have been working out all summer long. And in this picture, we have painted below. Remember, we thought the paint needed to look like the rest of the building, so that has not been updated. So for all intents and purposes, this facility is complete. This is some of the pictures, these are some of the pictures from the West Middle School remodel, and that project began in January of 2018. We did new flooring in the hallways, on the steps, in the classrooms. The bathrooms were totally redone, and this picture that has the green area is the new counselor's offices. Those were just completed. They were brought to the front of the building. There is still some work to be done, especially on the east side of the building where the fine arts classroom is, but Brett tells me we're going to be ready to go by August 16th. So there's still some work to do. If you'll remember, we're combining Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep. Wildcat Academy was formerly at 111 West Grand, and Teen Pep was behind Roosevelt in one of the outer buildings, if you've had a chance to drive by. The metal building has been painted navy blue, and this is the corridor. Wildcat Academy will be in the blonde, I'm sorry. Teen Pep is now moving over to the blonde brick building. Those classrooms, you can walk through all the classrooms, and we can provide our daycare services over there, and it'll be real handy for the students to be near their children. And then we're putting Wildcat Academy in the blue metal building where Teen Pep was formerly located. And this picture with the window happens to be one of the offices, so that there's a row of offices, and they can see through each classroom. And that will be ready to go on August 16th, when our students start. And we also remodeled bathrooms over there. We did East Middle School and Assembly Center flooring this summer. At East, we just replaced the hallways, both in the lower level and the upper level, and it looks really nice. Our carpet over there was in really bad shape, so that was a great improvement for East Middle School. And then in the Assembly Center at Pohai, it was carpeted, and there was carpet coming up, and we have replaced with carpet tiles at the Assembly Center. Washington Pre-K Center needed some work so that it, to make it ADA compliant. We installed an elevator, which needed to be done, and then built ramps for wheelchairs at Washington. And the bottom picture is just of the front of Washington Elementary. We'll start Phase 2 of that project. We'll actually start accepting bids in January of 2019 for the secure entrance at Washington Pre-K. That's our only school that doesn't have the secure entrance, but they will be before the end of the school year. The new logo on the middle of the football field was delivered this morning. It was rolled up, and it's out on the coach's parking lot, I believe. It should be installed by Wednesday, August 15th. Obviously, that's pending any rain, and it's supposed to be rainy this week. It is the new Wildcat hat head, which is our primary logo. It's huge. It will run from the 40-yard line to the 40-yard line, hash mark to hash mark. So they are working with our football team right now, working around our football team to install. We weren't going to have the football team practice on the practice field, but it's a little muddy with the rain, so they're just working together to make it work. So this installation will be complete, hopefully by Wednesday. Just some upcoming dates that you need to be aware of. Our new teachers reported last Wednesday on the 8th. Our returning teachers reported today. Today was a PD day, and then Tuesday and Wednesday are both workdays for our teachers. Our 10-month support personnel will return tomorrow, August 14th, 8:00 a.m. And then we have move-in nights, Tuesday night, August 14th, at our elementary schools in East Middle School and West Middle School. And then one date that I left out, we will have our final makeup enrollment at the registration center on Wednesday, the 15th. What are the hours, Barbara, on that?
Eight to 11:00.
Eight to 11:00 a.m. So right now, registration is closed. We're moving students into classes and looking at our numbers right now. So any questions about personnel, facilities, updates, or back-to-school issues?
No, I'd just like to say that today, this morning, was awesome.
Yes, thank you for coming to our assembly this morning. We did have a back-to-school assembly for our certified folks today, and we're having one on Wednesday at 12:30 for support people. So if you can come out, wear your Team PCPS t-shirt and join in the fun.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Next item will be for the consent agenda. Like a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time?
Can we go back just to one other thing?
Sure.
2018, 2019 accreditation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, no problem. Really quickly, we did get our status for accreditation for the 18-19 school year. We had no deficiencies throughout the district or at any of our sites. And if you know about the application process for accreditation, it's quite detailed and lots of tasks, lots of time, but our people stay on top of everything and do a great job. And accreditation just ensures that we're staying in compliance with our state laws. So we did great. No deficiencies. Fully accredited.
Deal. All right. Now the consent agenda.
I don't know if we accept that.
Motion from David. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. From Judy, approve the consent agenda. Roll call.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Troop.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrcheed.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item will be 5.1, consider and take action on the following district's financial reports. Had a good meeting, financial report the other day, and like the motion to approve that item.
I move to approve 5.1.
I'll second it.
Motion. Robin, Nancy, second. Thank you. Any other discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Troop.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrcheed.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye. Motion passed. Next item will be 5.2, consider and take action to name Jason Levitt as the Activity custodian for athletics.
Never heard of that.
We have to do that for all of our activity funds when we have a new person. It's basically because he's the new person in the athletic director position, he has to be approved.
We can call him a custodian then.
Of the activity fund. Yes.
I move it 5.2.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dave, and second from Nancy for 5.2. No other discussion?
You did a really good job, I think. Don't you?
Good.
For walking into it in three weeks.
He's done great.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mrs. Troop.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrcheed.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item will be 5.3, consider and take action on the public, Ponca City's Public Schools Logo Approval Form and License Agreement and Proposed Fee Structure Schedule.
Couple of years ago, when we rebranded, and if you'll notice, we have our logos in the back of the boardroom now, there was a company that did our rebranding, and it was called Brand Empowerment, and there are certain specifications for our logo. For example, there are certain formulas for the colors. There cannot be any words over, any text over the logos. Texts can be replaced, like if you'll see at the last one, Ponca City Athletics, that could say Ponca City Public Schools, or Ponca City Strength and Conditioning. And what we are finding is a lot of people are using our logos, and that's great. We want to promote school spirit. We want everyone to use it, but we have to keep in mind the guidelines that we consented to when Brand Empowerment helped us rebrand. So there's a lot of logos out there that are in violation of the specifications. So Gary actually came up with a three-tiered logo approval, and that is in your handouts. And if it's going through our athletic department, the route will be through Jason Levitt, our athletic director. If it's going through any of our school clubs or activities, the route will be through Brenda Story. It will come to me, and I'll look at the logo, make sure that it follows the specification, and we'll probably begin putting those on the consent agenda. Now, we also came up with a schedule fee, and it's not to try to make money, it's just we want our business to stay local. So for, there will be no fee for any district school site. So you know, we're all going to Wildcats this year, and a lot of our sites came up with the Woodland Wildcat t-shirt, or Trout Wildcat t-shirt, or whatever. No charge for logo there. No charge for any district athletics, or any school district sponsored organizations or clubs. We want our people to be able to use our logo. There's also no fee for public entities if they're using it not for profit, just like the Ponca City Police Department has the Wildcat logo on one of their front vendors. The Park and Rec Leagues are also going to be Wildcats next year, and that's what we want, so no fee there. So we, the second tier after no fee would be a one-time annual fee, and what we're proposing is that is $100 a year for local private vendors. We have a lot of home businesses that sell things on Etsy, or eBay, or just out of their home, a $100 fee per year, and a local merchant for 250 a year, for example, the Opportunity Center. And they were very pleased to be able to use our logo for profit. And this will, included in this group will be the board sanctioned 501(c)(3) organizations. Now, we also have the third tier, which would be a percentage basis for use of logo, and that would be a decision at the time of the agreement. This would be like high-bulk vendors, Walmart, Sam's, if they wanted to sell Ponca City Wildcat, or any out-of-community, or out-of-state, or out of the country. You know, if some company from Canada wants to sell Wildcat logo, then we'll ask for a percent of their profits. So that's the proposed fee schedule. Any questions about that?
What's the punishment if somebody misuses it?
Well, typically, I just give them a call and say, "Hey, we've got an agreement, and we would love for you to use it. I just want to let you know the specs." Gary could also write a friendly letter and say, "Hey, there's a logo usage agreement." We haven't had anybody that said, "I can use it if I want to," so.
But our contract doesn't say anything about that, Gary? If Walmart decides to print all kinds of Wildcat. Well, we can use any available remedy at law. We could get a restraining order against them, if you wanted me to.
Do they know that they have to do this?
The word's getting out, our, in that, it was almost like I was the logo police. People would tag me on Facebook and say, "Someone's using our logo inappropriately." So we needed some kind of guidelines. We want people to use our logo. They just need to know the specifications that we have to follow. We don't want to risk losing the logo. We can use it for free on our email and our letterhead, so that's already approved.
We have a motion to approve this item?
I move that we approve it. Item 5.3?
Second.
Second.
Yeah, 5.3.
Yes.
And second by Robin?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zemrcheed.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Troop.
Motion passed. Next item is 5.4, consider and take action on revisions to the board policy 5.12 wellness.
The wellness policy is in your handouts, and the only revision is in red font, and it's actually on page, it's kind of way back there, 10. This is in regard to other food items sold on school campuses, and I'll let Jeff talk to you about that.
In short, it's a, it's a policy to allow sites to sell food items, student groups, during the school day, other than at breakfast and lunch. That's about as short as I can make it.
As long as we have a board policy, we can complete a waiver. Sites can complete a waiver.
Complete a waiver.
And they can?
It's up to each site. They get 30 fundraisers a year. They can't last any more than 14 days. And this was created after the, you know, eight, 10 years ago, when the new rules came down and banned school groups from selling food on campus, so.
So if we have a group that is selling candy bars, if they complete this waiver, and it's in the board policy that they can, they can have the candy bars at lunch if they want to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to approve 5.4.
Thank you, Judy. Do you have a second?
I'll second it. Yeah, I'll second it, yeah.
Any other? Roll call, please.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Troop.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrcheed.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item will be 5.5, consider and take action on following contracts agreements with 2018-19 school year. A is an agreement with YMCA to provide the use of the aquatics facility. B, an agreement with Tamara Wiig, physical therapist, and to provide physical therapy services. C, we're going to table till next meeting. Is it C?
No, not C.
Oh, I'm sorry. C is the next item.
It's a change order, yes.
I got it wrote down wrong. We're going to, and C on an agreement with Payne Education Center for Training in the First Grade Foundations, First Grade Training. I guess that's it.
I move that we approve item 6, or 5.5.
I have a question, though. On A, on the YMCA.
Yes.
So this is a fee that we pay the YMCA for using. Those children that are in the swim club do not have to be members of the Y, correct? Or not correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Okay. They do not.
Do not have to be members.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Who made the first? David did?
Yes.
Nancy did?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any other discussion?
And that's for the swim team? Is this for the swim team and our little?
Yes.
And our second graders.
Second graders.
What's the second graders? They go?
They take them to the Y for swim lessons.
That's right, I remember that. All schools?
Well, all those that participate, Lincoln, Garfield. Is that, is that what we paid last year?
I think it's $450 more. Is that accurate, Brett?
$450 a month?
No, per year.
Total, okay.
3% increase.
Okay.
All right. He's on it. Yeah, I heard it.
1%?
3%.
No.
Sorry? 3% increase.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Troop.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrcheed.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item, consider and take action on the following change orders, 5.6. A, change order number one to the Washington Remodel Phase 1 ADA Accessibility Project. And B is the change order number one to the Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep Remodel Project. And C, we're going to table that for the next meeting. That's it, those two items. In 5.6.
So come, we're tabling C.
Yeah.
Brett's got some changes he needs to look at, and he's, stuff that they need to get back to on us.
It's not.
Was it the telephone pole or the pole?
Change order will be different next month than this one? It may be different. I'm not, I'm not negotiating that.
Well, are they going to be?
To approve something, I'm not ready to.
Are they going to be able to use parking lot?
Yes, yes, we'll have it.
Oh, okay.
This is the safety thing we need to do. It's not going to prevent the parking lot from being used.
Part of it has to do with the safety of going over that little lip, right?
That's correct. And I can put concrete blocks there until then.
Until then, okay, thank you.
Is there a lip?
Is there a lip?
Yeah.
Both in the Sonic.
Do we have a motion? Anybody?
I motion.
I second.
Motion by Nancy, second by David for 5.6. Any other discussion? If none, real call.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye. Motion passed. Next item will be 5.7, consider and take action to revise the 2018-19 school year calendar.
We've had this discussion at length in all of our committee meetings about reducing the contract year for our teachers. And last year, we had already decided to go from 185 to 183. And doing some analysis is why we lost teachers, of why we lost teachers, that kind of thing, and the number of contract days of county, area schools, we determined that you would like to consider to approve even decreasing the school year calendar by three days. So from 185, essentially, to 180. And basically, what we had done, the last day of school was supposed to be May 23rd, teacher checkout day would be May 24th. Now, the last day of school would be May 17th. We moved the May 3rd snow day to May 20th, and then teacher checkout would be the 21st. So if we don't have to use snow day number one, teachers could essentially check out on the 20th. We would move teacher check out, checkout day forward.
Would it be snow day one, or snow day two?
It'd be snow day one. We like to put snow day two on Good Friday, because if we give up one, typically, we don't like to give up Good Friday. We want to have, we want our employees to be able to spend that holiday time with their family.
So if we have one snow day, they've got to go to school on the Monday?
They don't have to go to school, that is a snow day, that would be, yes, it.
If we use one day?
If we use one.
If we use this one day, one snow day, they don't get off that Monday?
Correct.
Or you make it up on Good Friday?
It's putting Good Friday over that Monday.
Yeah.
Correct. But it still shortens the, they would be going till the 23rd, so.
Yeah, they get off four days early, instead of five, if we use a snow day.
We have to, yeah.
We used one this last school year.
Graduation on the 17th?
Still to be determined, but likely, yes.
Okay.
I motion it.
I second it.
Motion from Nancy, second from David on 5.7. Any other discussion? Real call.
I've got a question on that. Zach, are the teachers aware of this? And they're okay?
Yes, they're announced it this morning. It was told to our negotiations team, our negotiations. Teachers seemed okay with it. There wasn't, we didn't really have time to discuss if we use that snow day, students would be coming back that Monday. I think, though, it's still a sentiment, you know, it's not ideal, but reduction in days was overriding factor. There was a lot of positivity about that. I get a lot of complaints from teachers, a lot of times, whenever I'm asking what they want us to negotiate, calendar comes up, but that's not part of negotiations, and there's always, we go too many days.
I figured if we use that snow day, you're going to have a whole lot of absentees the following Monday.
Oh, I don't think so.
It's a possibility. In high school, that would end up most likely.
It's their job, I don't see that.
It'd become finals day for high school, so those kids would have to show up. I don't know that there's a way around.
They'll have finals.
Even getting a lot of kids absent towards the end of the year anyway, regardless of when we get some parent scheduled vacation before school's out.
Let's just hope it does.
I don't know why, the calendar's out a year and a half of days, but.
That's one reason we wanted to, we wanted you all to consider in August, so families can plan, and they know that they needed to be here, possibly, on that, that day. Now, our teachers are also aware that this is pending board approval.
And I did tell them this morning that the calendar, while we have input through the calendar committee, ultimately, it is the school board's decision on the calendar, and we have to abide by that decision. So I get complaints a lot about the calendar, why we didn't go with the one that teachers prefer. It's like, well, the school board chose differently. That's their prerogative, we just get to give our input.
I typically don't remember bringing a calendar that the committee doesn't decide on to the board.
No, it was, it was an issue where what the teachers voted on was different than what the committee came up with, and so there were complaints on that. I was like, well, the committee came up with something different.
Yeah, yeah, it's the committee. We bring the committee calendar to the board, they don't select from the calendars.
What happens if we lose the second snow day?
Then we will be going to school on the 19th. If we lose a third snow day, which we hope we don't, we'll be going to school on the We could be.
If you lost more than those three, what happens?
We have a little wiggle room in the calendar, not a lot. We were fortunate enough, through the teacher walkout, that we could forgive some of those days for our students, but we couldn't on our contract, and you all approved for the teachers to either work late or early, and, and actually, you reduced three days last year of the walkout for the teachers of the contract. So basically, this is essentially the same thing.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item will be 5.8, consider and take action on the proposed executive session for the following purpose, to discuss impossible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report, to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation, and discuss negotiations. We do need an executive session, I'd like a motion.
I'll make a motion for an executive session.
Thank you, Judy. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Nancy. Real call.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
We're in executive session. It's returned to open session. Executive session minutes were kept, remain confidential, or what, maybe, whatever.
Confidential.
511, consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel, 5.11. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I approve.
Have a motion from Nancy, do you have a second?
I second.
Second from David. Any other discussion? Real call.
Dr. Kincaid?